Good evening, everyone. First off, we're going to start off with a video tonight.
Hello and welcome to this North Penn News Update. I'm Anissa Gardisi. Drexel University's Society of Women Engineers provided an evening of innovation and discovery for tomorrow's leaders. At the Engineering Night for Girls, more than 75 North Penn students in grades eight through 12 participated in hands-on activities and small group discussions while learning about the different types of engineering opportunities. We all know there are 12 eggs in a carton, 60 minutes in an hour, or two peas in a pod. But did you know there are only six students in the world to earn every point possible on the AP Computer Science Principles exam? One of those six students is North Penn sophomore Benjamin Curley, who took the exam in May 2017. The College Board said, "This outstanding accomplishment is likely a direct reflection of the top-quality education being offered at the high school." Nice job, Ben. It is Foundation February throughout the district, and things are in full swing. The district-wide fundraising effort encourages all of our buildings to be creative in raising money in support of the educational foundation. Last year, Foundation February raised over $5,000 for the foundation, and this year, we hope to raise even more through our dedicated staff and student efforts. The Philadelphia Eagles may have won the Super Bowl, but the Knights football team won the Reading Super Bowl. Members of the team headed into our 13 elementary schools where they each read a selected book and talked to the students about the importance of reading and being a good school citizen. Now, some may ask, "Is it really winning if you inhale 20 wings in 20 seconds?" Well, it is if you want to win the annual Wing Bowl trophy at North Penn High School. After the preliminary rounds, the finals took place center stage in the high school gymnasium with the wrestling team claiming victory for this year. And love was in the air of the halls of North Penn High School as singing Valentines delivered messages of love. The groups sang their way class to class, bringing smooth melodies of love and appreciation on Valentine's Day. That's all for this North Penn News Update. I'm Anissa Gardisi. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, I would like to make the announcement that executive session met tonight from 6:30 to 7:30 PM prior to the work session to discuss matters of personnel, potential litigation, and negotiations. What? Oh, no. Oh, inaction. Oh, I'm sorry. Prior to the action meeting tonight. Okay. Got it. All right, so we're moving on now. We're going to go to recognitions and proclamations.
Yes, we do have one recognition that we'd like to do tonight, and I think it's quite appropriate that this individual will be the only individual we'll recognize tonight because I think he deserves to have that spotlight on him. So we'd like to have John Schilling. If you could move a little closer to us here, perhaps maybe the front row, John. We've got to be able to talk to you about what it is that we want to talk to you about. So thank you for that. So John Schilling is retired now from the school board, and he spent more than 22 years on the school board, doing a tremendous service to our community, always doing what he believed was the right thing to do, and I really appreciate that about John. So we do have a plaque we'd like to present. Before we do that, I certainly want to open up to any other board members who would like to have any comments in regard to Mr. Schilling and his service to our school district. Are there any other thoughts or comments anyone would like to share?
Yes. I just wanted to say, as a new board member and incoming president, that John Schilling was very welcoming to us, and we really appreciate that. He gave us a lot of advice. This is not easy, being on the side of the table all of a sudden, like, you know, it's all a lot of new stuff to learn, and John was very helpful in providing his guidance to us over the time he was here with us. So we really appreciate that, and, you know, we're sorry to see you resign, and we wish you all the best in your future.
And John, 20-some years. It's been a pleasure to work with you on all the different issues, agreements and disagreements. It's always a pleasure to work with you. Thank you.
I'll add to that. I echo what Mrs. Stoll and Mrs. Prokowsky have said. John, one of the things that I'll remember about you, I don't even know if you recall, but we had an executive session, or in the executive session room while the rest of the board was meeting, probably about a year and a half ago, and we were just talking about different things, not even school district-related. And I had shared with you that I was feeling conflicted on one of my votes and wasn't exactly sure how I was going to vote. And you told me, when the two of us were talking, to vote my heart and to not let anybody pressure me into voting a certain way because you shared that in your 22-year career, there was one vote that you kind of felt pressured to take, and you never felt good about it. And I've never forgotten that, the advice that you've shared, and I try to have my votes reflect that. And so thank you for sharing that. I'll remember that for as long as I serve on this board. I wish you the best. Thank you.
And John, thank you very much for the kindness, openness, and honesty you've shared. It's been a pleasure in the short amount of time. You made it easy with the transition, and, you know, some really big shoes to fill. I'll be proud if I'm able to accomplish just a portion of what you've been able to. And I'll remember on our swearing-in after it's all done, and we immediately, I always thank you for the time. You'd always give me really good advice once we, meetings adjourned. I remember my son coming up and going, "What was he telling you about? Looked like you were in trouble." It's like, "No, Nathan." No, I go, "That man, Mr. Schilling, is teaching me a lot, and thank you for that wisdom. It won't be forgotten, John."
Yeah, just same thing. John, thank you so much for the kindness you showed me, especially you were just wonderful when I came on the board, and I hope that we can grab coffee and talk about the book you gave me at some point soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, we have only had two meetings together, and so I regret not getting to know and work with you longer. But in those two meetings, what I valued most was that you are so willing to share your perspective, and I think that that really helps to ground and root me, as I now venture forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
John, same thing here with me. The thing I remember most, I had such a short time here with you, but even in the time when we were coming to the meetings prior, consistently in every meeting, when we would go through and bring in the gifts, it was always, "Let's look over towards John and make sure that John gets time to thank everybody." That was something that was, even in the short time, it's clear that you cared about that stuff and making sure that people understood how thankful we were for the stuff that they were giving us. So, thank you. And I'll be looking over to Mrs. Ott over here to make sure that she follows up her spot. She's saying you see.
Go for it. I'll be calling John to get his advice.
Thanks. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And, John, I would say that 22 years of service to this community, you've sacrificed quite a bit to make this a better place, to make this district a great district. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to know you better, but in the short time I did get to know you, I found you to be a gentleman. I found you to be somebody who put the priority of the district first and did what he could to help us adjust in a tough transition. So thank you, and thank you for your service.
We do have a plaque that we'd like to present, and it reads, "Presented to John T. Schilling, North Penn School District Board of School Directors, 1995-2018, in recognition of your service, dedication, and support of the North Penn School District, its students, staff, and community. Dream big and achieve greatness." So, John, come on forward if you would, please. (applause) I appreciate you. Thank you very much. Very, very welcome, John. Very, very welcome. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to have John circle around. Yeah, we're going to have you circle around. Yeah, why don't you do that? I think there are some other guys over there who want to shake their hand, too, John.
I don't want to hold the eagle. Thank you so much. I want to show a photo of that one. Thank you so much. Don't forget the four awards, would you? Thank you so much. Thank God bless. Excellent. Thank you. Thanks again, folks. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Audience of Citizens. Anyone has public comment?
Good evening. My name is William Patchell, and I live at 404 Bonnie Lane in Lansdale. And I had two children go through the district, as I said many times, and they received what I feel was an adequate education. There'd always be room for improvement because, you know, in that relationship, it's reciprocal that sometimes the children don't realize the opportunity which is being given to them, and they woefully realize this, "I wish I'd have studied a little bit more. I don't know what to say." Well, things in life, they're like arrows. They leave the bow, but you can never get them back. You know, you can remediate it. You can go to Monco. Many of our students, "Well, how you doing? Oh, I had to take a lot of remedial courses." "What?" "Yeah." You know, and I'm actually shocked sometimes. My son went to Monco. My daughter went to Monco, kind of like spring training before you get to the big, before you get called up, you know? And I think it's very beneficial. I said, "You know, see your batting average down there in Clearwater, and we'll talk about coming calling you up." But, and Mr. Schilling, I really admire him. He's had to listen to me drone on for six years, and, you know, sometimes I do get a little long in the tooth. But my topic tonight is, "Good evening. My topic for the board is most painful, and the public is shocked and feeling helpless. I have noted violence in the country. It's on TV every night, whether it's internationally, Iraq, Afghanistan, South Korea. So the public is almost immersed in this toxic environment constantly. We have people coming back from wherever. It must be millions of people coming back from Iraq, immersed in violence, immersed in killing, immersed in a lifestyle which people here don't really have any real, they have no knowledge of, okay? It's on TV. I think the average child sees about 80,000 murders a year. It's okay. Why are you shocked with this?" You know? I find it really hard to believe. It's in films. They have the thing with the sexual predators. "What? Oh, you're just shocked? I thought you knew that went on for a long time." It's in sports, NASCAR, nothing like a good wreck. You know, the public gets excited, you know? Dale Earnhardt hitting the wall. "Oh, yeah? You know, it was an exciting race, okay? And multi-car piled up." This culture embraces video games where in your mind you learn to desensitize yourself from, "Wow." That's not a good thing for the human mind to have. They come to school, zero tolerance for violence. You're dealing with 3,200 students by the time they get to high school, fully immersed in being desensitized. I don't know whether they really believe. I'm shocked. I can't, oh, it's really, yeah. But you never said anything that you were outraged of what's going on, okay? And that could have easily been our high school because we are the same size as that school. I think that this place, although they have tried with cameras and, you know, various things that we can do, this place is about as porous as a piece of Swiss cheese. You know that. You know what? You go to the football games. I tell you what, this may be something that'll have to come to an end. How would we possibly ever screen everybody? You're going to have TSA at Crawford Field? I don't think so. They have sports, concussions. "Oh, yeah, I saw that Patriot player. They carried him off." Little, they wouldn't say it was a concussion. "No, it was a head injury." Please don't say that word. We've got a lot of problems with that. Now it is more victims in school shootings, again, and again, and again, every month now, okay? And again, you can't build a school system that looks like the Magino Line. I mean, what are you going to do? I mean, I talked to a gentleman. He went to school in the Bronx. It was, yeah, it was the Bronx. Yeah. And he said, "Well, how was your school? Lockdown." He said, "When the school started, no one in, nobody out, guards." I said, "Wow, you had security before security was in." And that's the only way that you can control it. And how do you control a federal prison? Marion, lockdown, 23 hours a day. I don't know how that's going to work with a system because you're always vulnerable. "Oh, they're standing at the bus stops. They're standing unloading of the thing. They're standing in here." I pointed to Dr. Dietrich. I went by that middle school. "All the kids are playing out in the playground." They'd have walked, you'd park your car and walk right over, playing in a playground. Absolutely no perimeter security. I don't know how that works, and, you know, you ought to look into it, okay? Security will soon be the fastest-growing fixed cost. Trust me. Fastest-growing, you forget full-time daycare. It's not going to happen. You can't afford it, okay? And I don't know what we're going to do. So I was looking at this, and I found this in the North Penn Reporter. "The West Hickens School District is soliciting proposals for professional security officers' services outsourcing at the high school. Sealed proposals will be received at the administrative office February 26." They figured it out. You can't afford these guys on our payroll. You're going to have to outsource this because, I'll tell you what, when Health and Human Services or whoever decides what the security is going to be at the school, I guarantee you, all H is going to break loose. And you know what? You're thinking you're going to be going to Gratersford when it's finally all over. And this is what's going to happen. "Well, what are we going to do? Oh, well, you know, we used to have a platoon of guards. Now what? We've got a whole company of guards. You've got 120 guards? Yeah. Nobody in the hallway, personally. It's going to be grim. They're going to have the automatic button like the watertight doors on a Titanic. They all close. I don't know what you're going to do, but I tell you what, you're nine million in the hole. Thank you for the nine million. I know you're working diligently to get this down. You know what? I filed a 10-year Treasury. You know what? It's almost 3% now. What are you going to do when it's 6%? You won't refi anything. And you know the people coming here? No more home equity loans. Their taxes, I'm telling you, you know what they're going to do? Anybody with a brain in his head, when they get to be retired, "I'm moving to Texas or Florida" because they have a really nice environment for people moving there. No state income tax. They don't have Berkeimer. They don't have any of this annoyance. You know what? Like I said, "What am I going to do? I'm going to leave my house empty. I'm going to get the grass cut. I understand one minute. I'm going to keep the grass cut. You know what? The last place on my tax thing that I can actually borrow up to a half a million dollars, my house is not worth that, and I can have a deduction." You people are in a pickle. I'm telling you, I think Mr. Schilling is actually lucky to escape. So you have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Would anyone else like to make public comment? All right, we're moving on then.
Bill, I do just want to have a brief follow-up on that. I certainly always, Mr. Patchell, appreciate your comments and your participation. I will say, I don't completely agree with the statement that this place is as porous as a slice of Swiss cheese. We as a board take student safety very seriously, and I'll give you an example. I teach on a monthly basis in the civics program at Montgomery Elementary School, and I couldn't even get in the building last Thursday, and that's where I went to school, and every staff member in that building knows me. And they made me wait outside until they had printed my badge, until I had signed the visitor logbook. And they have two books there, and I signed the wrong book the first time, and they still wouldn't let me in until I crossed it out and signed in the other book.
... to penetrate the school in a non-conforming kind of way.
I understand.
You wait there, and a kid comes out, you go in.
Sure. I understand. I just wanted to follow up and just make sure that the public is aware that the issues are on our radar screen, and we can always improve, but it's a priority to our board.
Okay. Moving on then. Recommend approval of the minutes from the February 6, 2018 work session, as well as minutes from the special action meeting held on February 6, 2018, as circulated. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Ms. Ott. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion's approved. Committee reports. Start off with Personnel. Personnel met on Wednesday, January 31 to discuss matters of personnel, negotiation, and potential litigation. End of report. Finance, Mr. D'Azio.
Thank you. You know, Mr. O'Donnell, I thought these reports were only long because you wrote them, but it doesn't seem to be the case. Finance Committee report for Thursday, February 15, 2018. The board met on, or I'm sorry, the committee met on January 22, 2018, and there was also a special meeting on February 1, 2018. Other, under new business for the committee, the monthly financial reports were reviewed with additional discussion on the following items. The 2018-2019 extended school care tuition rates. Ms. Scott provided an overview of the extended care program and the proposed 3% rate increase for the upcoming year. The extended care program is an enterprise fund operated like a business and receives no tax dollars. The extended care program will make a $50,000 contribution to the general fund for the 2018-2019 year as it did in the current fiscal year. The summer 2018 extended school year camp rates were also discussed, and Ms. Scott proposed keeping those rates at the same level as in the summer 2017. Board Docs demonstration. Mr. Skrocky provided an overview of the online program for board meetings and document management system, and a representative from Board Docs provided a live demo and reviewed the features of the software. The 2018-2019 preliminary budget. Mr. Skrocky gave a presentation on the preliminary budget, giving a history of revenue and expenditures, explaining Act I exceptions, and identifying major expenditure increase drivers. Departmental budget presentations will be made at the upcoming Finance Committee meetings. Next item is the 2017 real estate tax liens. Mr. Skrocky reviewed the delinquent property historical data and trend of fewer unpaid parcels. Next is the 2018-2019 MCIU Membership Services Budget. The MCIU is the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Mr. Skrocky reviewed how North Penn's share is calculated, and the overall increase for the district for the upcoming year is $5. The components of the budget include community and government relations, professional learning, and technology services. Next is insurance broker services. Mr. Skrocky reviewed the differences between seeking requests for proposals versus requests for qualifications for the general liability auto umbrella and errors in insurance policies. The real estate tax rebate program. Mr. Skrocky reviewed the tax rebate program that the board approved in October of 2017. Rebates are available starting in July for homeowners who also qualify for the Pennsylvania Property Tax Rebate Program administered by the Pennsylvania Department of Revenue. The maximum North Penn rebate is $162.50 for the first year of the program. The monthly financial reports were reviewed, and certain recommendations were made for streamlining the reports for reporting to the board. The items today for action are the 2017 budget transfers for the month of December, the 2018-2019 extended care rates, the summer 2018 extended care camp rates, the contract with Board Docs, the 2018-2019 preliminary budget, and Act I exception application was previously approved at the board's February 6 meeting. The Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Membership Services Budget is on tonight's agenda, and also on tonight's agenda is the insurance broker request for qualifications. The next regular meeting of the Finance Committee will be held on Monday, February 26, 2018, at 6:30 PM at the ESC, and a special Finance Committee meeting will be held on Thursday, March 1, 2018, at 6:00 PM at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Safe Schools, Mr. Casa.
The Safe Schools Committee met on Monday, February 12, 2018. The committee reviewed the history of North Penn's security initiatives over the past at least three years. The committee reviewed a proposal to replace four older cameras at North Penn High School along with three older cameras at Culp Elementary School. These are upgrades. Chris Dur shared some data from the new Report Executive Software System. This is for student conduct incident reports, a very sophisticated system which should help with our efficiencies and effectiveness. Chris also reviewed the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency Winter Weather Drill. This is a drill similar to a tabletop in which, throughout the day, North Penn's response and emergency management is tested with a series of issues that slowly build, dealing with a winter storm, and that tests our response and preparedness. The committee also discussed flu prevention, a climate survey, and the recent canine searches which have begun. The committee also discussed a new schedule for future meetings. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held on Monday, March 12, 2018, at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. ECP, Mr. Fusco.
Thank you. The ECP Committee met this week on Monday, February 12. At that meeting, the committee received curriculum updates pertaining to special content area subjects. These subjects include health and PE, art, music, family and consumer sciences, and library. In health classes at the high school, classroom visits are scheduled in March with victim services and Laurel House representatives who will speak about sexual violence and domestic abuse. Other developments in the health curricula across the district include the use of polar HR monitors to provide real-time feedback on personal fitness for students, educational sessions for teachers with the DEA, FBI, and Taunton PD about the opioid crisis in Pennsylvania, and the implementation of hands-only CPR program for the 10th grade health students. In art, the integration of technology has enhanced the curriculum, particularly with the use of the iPad Pro for digital photography and animation at the high school, and the use of Chromebooks and Adobe products for graphic design instruction in the middle schools. NPSD art students have received recognition for their digital and other works, both locally and nationally. An exciting program that is being piloted in the library curriculum at six elementary schools this year will be implemented in all elementary schools in the fall of 2018. Launch is a design-thinking program facilitated by librarians that encourages students to think critically and design solutions based on research and literacy. Similarly, secondary libraries have established Makerspace or Design Thinking sections. Other updates were also provided on curricula and accomplishments in family and consumer science and music. There's also discussion regarding the establishment of guidelines for schools to follow in hot weather. Dr. Holman will meet with Scott Kennedy, Director of Facilities and Operations, and Eric Hubner, NPA representative, to develop recommendations that will be presented to the committee in March. The committee also discussed changing its meeting schedule to the fourth Tuesday of the month, beginning in April. This will be on the action portion of the ECP agenda in March. The next committee meeting will be March 12, 2018. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Support Services, Mr. Casa.
Thank you. The Support Services Committee met on January 29, 2018. The committee reviewed credit change orders for the roofing projects at Gwinnett Square, Walton Farm, and the Support Services Center. The committee also reviewed credit change orders for the HVAC project at Oak Park and Montgomery Elementary School project. The committee reviewed two proposals from engineering firms to evaluate one of the boilers at North Penn High School. The committee also reviewed a proposal to replace four older cameras at North Penn High School along with three older cameras at Culp Elementary School, as noted in the Safe Schools Committee report. Scott Kennedy reviewed the current demand-response program, and the committee agreed to approve a three-year extension to that contract. The committee also reviewed the status of the remaining HVAC unit at Montgomery Elementary School. Scott Kennedy reviewed the high school athletic field study, which was prepared by Arcotera. The committee requested a proposal from Arcotera to try and obtain a variance for the stadium. The next Support Services Committee meeting will be held on Monday, January 29, 2018, at 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
January 29?
Monday, January 29. That must be February 20. We're looking at February, Scott, or February 26? The committee also reviewed the status of the remaining HVAC unit at Montgomery Elementary School. Scott Kennedy reviewed the high school athletic field study, which was prepared by Arcoterra. The committee requested a proposal from Arcoterra to try and obtain a variance for the stadium. The next Support Services Committee meeting will be held on Monday, January 29, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. here at the ESC. End of report.
January 29?
Monday, January 29. That must be February 20. We're looking at February, Scott, or? February 26?
It's February 29.
See, we were paying attention.
February 29.
No, there's no 29.
And so if this shows, yeah, and, yeah. Good morning, San Diego. Yeah, just read what's written. All right. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. North Monco Technical Career Center, Mr. D'Azio.
Thank you. I reported the North Monco Joint Operating Committee met on January 17, and I provided a report of that meeting on January 18. So we have not met since that time, and our next meeting is this upcoming Wednesday, February 1, 2018, at 7 o'clock p.m. The only update in addition, though, is, in the meantime, is that our search for an executive director continues, and I hope to have an announcement that we have a permanent candidate within the next few months. End of report.
February 21st. You said first.
21st. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. I don't believe we have any report tonight because there wasn't anyone attending the meeting.
Correct, and I believe will there be action on tonight's agenda to appoint?
Mrs. Romic, yes.
A board member?
Yes.
We'll do that under?
New business. Yep. Okay. North Penn Educational Foundation, Ms. Ott.
The foundation last met on February 7. At this meeting, we discussed several things, including the annual financial statements prepared by Herbin and Company Incorporated, which were distributed to the trustees. We received a clean review of the foundation's financials for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. Threshold for review has changed to $250,000 for contributions received instead of $100,000 during a fiscal year. So the foundation will be able to do a compilation next year. They also prepared and filed our tax return. Financially, we're looking strong this year as well. Our education improvement tax credit dollars continue to build, and we received $29,500 additional EITC funds. Our long-term investments also continue to do well, and as of January, we had close to $160,000 in long-term investments. Dr. Dietrich also spoke of a $10,000 donation received from the Lincoln Financial Foundation that the trustees approved to be used for a speaker series at North Penn High School. So on March 20, we are doing, the foundation is funding two student presentations and an evening presentation on the topic of suicide prevention. Kevin Hines, who survived jumping off of the Golden Gate Bridge, is an acclaimed speaker on the topic and will be with us that day. More information will come shortly. Foundation February, as you saw in the video, is well underway with 10 of our schools participating. These buildings are holding fundraisers to support the foundation. We're hoping to top last year's proceeds of $5,000. Solicitation letters will soon be mailed for the fifth annual online auction being planned for May. So check your mailboxes for those. And one grant just recently implemented was for the purchase of new telescopes in the North Penn High School planetarium. On January 25, the telescopes were used to view the moon and Orion Nebula. The equipment will be used again on February 23 when those at the astronomy club party will view even more celestial states. And the foundation's next meeting is Wednesday, March 7. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Libarowski at the ESC.
Thank you, Mrs. Ott. Moving on to superintendent's report.
Thank you. I recommend approval of the settlement agreement for student 21518-1.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mrs. Perkowski, seconded by Mrs. Romic. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the designated Act 80 days for the 2018-19 year per item 618.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Perkowski. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit 2018-19 Membership Services Budget in the amount of $1,785,916 per item BA 4A through G. The North Penn School District portion of the budget is $209,831, which represents a $5 increase over the 2017-18 year.
Do I have a motion to approve? Or do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Ms. Ott. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Recommend approval of change order R1 to Procom Roofing Corporation for the Walton Farm, Gwinnett Square, and Support Services Center projects add a credit to the contract amount of $60,451.30 for revised metal edging, deletion of new wood blocking, deletion of masonry, sealer, metal deck repairs, and roof ladder modification per item 718.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of change order GC1 to Walter Brooker and Company Incorporated for the Oak Park Multipurpose Room HVAC project add a credit to the contract in the amount of $5,120 for roof drain supports, masonry infill, and deletion of window soffit per item 818.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Perkowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of change order FP2 to Accelerated Fire Protection Incorporated for the Montgomery Elementary School addition and renovation project add a credit to the contract in the amount of $10,102 for not installing the pre-action system per item 918.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Casa, seconded by Ms. Ott. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of a contract with ICS Consulting to complete an engineering study of the North Penn High School boiler in the amount of $1,600 per item 1018.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mrs. Perkowski, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
What's the, what's the background on this one? Did this come out of ECP or?
Supporting.
We've been having a lot of trouble with the 1982 boiler at the high school. A lot of repairs this winter, so we want to be prepared in case it fails, and we need to move quickly.
So they're going to tell us what kind of condition it's in?
No, they're going to look at it, recommend alternate options to replace it with lifecycle costs. So we're ready to, we know what the budget would be. If we have to replace it in the summer, next winter, next year, we'll just know what that entails, what the cost would be.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to purchase four replacement cameras for the North Penn High School and three replacement cameras for Culp Elementary School from Apptech Corporation in the amount of $11,079.47 per item 1118. Payment is to be made from the Capital Reserve Fund.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Perkowski. Do we have any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts through the district as listed. We have one gift in Walton Farm Elementary School.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Romic, seconded by Mrs. Perkowski. Any comments or questions, Mrs. Ott? No? Got to take John's spot.
I guess I can say thank you from the board and the district.
There you go.
In honor of John.
Very much appreciated.
Very much appreciated.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend the approval of personnel items listed A through D.
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All? Commentary? Oh, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of contracts per item BA 8A through B, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mrs. Romic. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of student travel per item BA 9.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Ms. Ott. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to develop and seek requests for qualifications for insurance broker services for the package auto, legal liability, umbrella, excess umbrella, and student accident coverage, and direct the business office to prepare the documents for same.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
I'd just like to comment that this just continues our practice of seeking competitive proposals on a variety of different items. So we've done that now with legal, with architect engineering services. We're now doing the same thing with insurance broker services. So just so the community understands with a change in leadership, we're trying to make sure that the community is getting the best bang for its buck when it comes to professional service providers that we're entering into contracts with on behalf of public money.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to establish the extended school care tuition rates for the 2018-19 school year per item 1318A through B.
Do I have a motion? So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
I'd just like to commend the program, what I've learned about it so far and its management, its service to the community that it provides is a real benefit and something we should be proud of as a district.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Any other comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval to establish the extended school care summer camp fees at the rate of $265 per week for the 2018 year. That is prorated for the week of July 2 through the 6 per item 1418.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded, or do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Romic, seconded by Mrs. Perkowski. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Dietrich. Moving on to the finance report, Mr. Skrocky.
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of quick updates before I deliver the treasures report. First off, on Tuesday, February 6, Governor Wolf provided his budget address for the 2018-19 year. And of course, we're particularly interested in what kind of state funding will come North Penn's way, in particular for the basic education funding and special education funding. So for basic education funding, North Penn is looking at a 3.07% increase for the upcoming year. That's about $314,000 more for North Penn. For special education, that is only 0.82% increase, or $53,000. So we will include these revised figures in our budget when we perform our next iteration of the 2018-19 budget. Overall, it actually is $117,000 less than what we did have in the preliminary budget. So especially on the special education front, we receive less than what we expected. Secondly, I want to let the board know that just this afternoon, I received the final results for two of our tax collector audits. We actually rotate our tax collectors every year, two tax collectors each year, and they are subject to an audit by our auditing firm, Malley LLP. The two that were selected for this year are North Wales Borough and Lansdale Borough, and both reports came back with excellent ratings. No issues, no findings, no concerns whatsoever. So kudos to those two tax collectors. The third item I'd like to talk about is the rebate program. Mr. D'Azio mentioned that in the finance committee update. And just a reminder to our community, the board did approve a real estate tax rebate program for North Penn homeowners with certain income levels that goes into effect July 1 of this year. So the North Penn program piggybacks on the existing Pennsylvania Property Tax Rebate Program. So basically, if you meet the guidelines through the state, you're also eligible for rebate through North Penn School District. It's 25% of the amount that you would be eligible for from the state, and the maximum rebate for North Penn School District would be $162.50. So this program is in effect for the 18-19 year, and the 25% rebate of the maximum through the state is subject for board consideration on an annual basis. So we're pleased about this program. We will continue to promote it pretty heavily between now and July. So if you are eligible for the state program, please take advantage of the North Penn Rebate Program. And finally, with the board's approval of the board stock contract tonight, we have a situation where we're going to be going to a paperless system. Probably will occur at either the April or May school board meeting. Implementation is going to be scheduled shortly. Training will be scheduled for late March or early April. A session for the board will also be included. But what that will be, what that will mean is elimination of the paper documents, and we'll have real-time tracking of the votes recorded at the meeting. We'll eliminate this book that just gets retyped at a later date once we go paperless. So with the board's use of the Chromebooks now, this is a really nice fit in. And for our community, we are encouraging our community members to access all the documents online as well. We will start weaning off of the paper copies that we produce for the community at the meetings. We will have the interactive agenda posted on the screen for our meetings, and we can record the votes directly for the public to see, and the documents posted on the screen at the meeting. So we're pretty excited about this. The board docs program is used by over 100 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. So again, either the April or May meeting is what we're targeting for actual implementation. So for the treasures report. This report is for the month of January 2018, and our cash receipts for the month were $4,165,278.69. Disbursements were nearly four times that amount at $16,612,86.60. North Penn's cash balance through the end of January was $148,92,192.91, and that's roughly $8.5 million higher than last year at this time. Any questions on the treasures report?
No.
Hearing none. Moving on, I recommend ratification of disbursements for the month of January 2018 in the amount of $20,73,146.90 per item BA-11.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the December 2017 budget transfers in the amount of $288,770.45 per item BA-12A through B.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Skrocky. Okay. Moving on to other business then. Recommend approval of the employment agreement with Stephen B. Skrocky as Chief Financial Officer effective July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2023. A copy of the contract is on file in the district offices.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. D'Azio, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
Yes. I don't remember seeing a final document. Did we see one?
I believe it was emailed out.
Was it me?
It was me email.
How different was it from the original?
I think simply the date was changed because of it being February instead of January that we got it signed. Yeah, that was the only change. Any other comments or questions?
I have some brief comments. I just want to say how lucky the district is to have Steve here as the CFO starting in July, when that title takes effect. There are good business managers out there, there's great business managers, there's outstanding business managers, and then there's Steve. Most people think of the business manager as just a money guy, right? The business manager, they're the ones that do the budget transfers, they put the budget together. Most people don't realize that the person that is in Steve's position also handles transportation, oversees facilities, oversees technology, food service, district safety, benefits, in a district, in addition to everything that runs through the business office. Basically touches every aspect of the operation of the school district. So when you have a bad person in that position, or even just somebody that's a mediocre person, it's easy to see how things can go south pretty quickly. I can't imagine that there's a school district out there in the Commonwealth that, in the market for a business manager, wouldn't be interested in talking to Steve. So I just want to convey that he has my full support, and I'm glad that the rest of the board collectively agrees that it's best for us to move forward with Steve for, for the next five years. Thank you, Steve, for everything you've done, and look forward to many more years.
Yes, thank you, Steve. I think there's bipartisan agreement that we are very fortunate to have you, so thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Oh, I already have that motion, right. All in favor then?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Recommend approval of the revised 2018 committee assignments per item BA-13. And what they are is that Mark Warren is going to replace John Chilling on the Support Services Committee. So the Support Services Committee will be Jonathan Casa, Mark Warren, and Tina Stoll. And then Mrs. Romick, she will take Mark Warren's spot on the ECP Committee. So the ECP Committee will now be Mr. Fusco, Mrs. Perkowski, and Mrs. Romick.
And I believe in addition to that, Mrs. Romick has been designated as the MCIU Board Representative.
Congratulations, Julian. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Recommend the establishment of an additional Safe Schools Committee meeting on April 10th, 2018, at 6:00 PM to be held at the Educational Service Center 401 East Hancock Street in Lansdale. Do I have a motion?
Sure. Motion.
Do I have a second? Motion by Ms. Ott, seconded by Mr. Casa.
Have a comment?
Head of the Safe Schools Committee. Do I have any comments or questions?
Yes. This decision was made, I think it's a reflection, especially in light of the tragedy yesterday and ongoing tragedies, 18 school shootings now, just in 2018, that we felt as a Safe Schools Committee together that we should have some more meetings to tackle the issues that are ahead of us. Those agendas will continue to be refined, become more robust, and tackle such issues such as behavioral threat assessment and other priorities which were already in the queue but have obviously received renewed prominence as becoming a priority of this district. So that additional meeting and those moving forward, though we're going to move the dates, you know, we want to make sure that we stay ahead of this, as mentioned by Mr. D'Azio's comments earlier today on Safe Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?